All right, it's five thirty and I'll call the regular meeting of the Aurora City Council to order and could we have a roll call please?
We sure can. Gody.
Yes.
McClosick, Hanson.
Here.
Hess.
Here.
Dregger.
Here. So we have a full council, they put their hands in for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
To those in the audience, you'll probably see some new faces at the council table here. We have our two new councillors, Bob Hanson and John McClosick, who were elected in the November election. Sure, they've been sworn in at an earlier portion of our meetings this evening and we welcome them and proceed with full intent on a full agenda, so we'll proceed there. Normally at this point and according to our agenda, we would move to a consent agenda consideration and with council approval, since we have a number of citizens that are wanting to make presentations to the council, I wonder if we couldn't move down to Agenda Item 10, take care of that, first give people a chance to speak and address us and then return back to the agenda, is that acceptable?
Yep.
All right, so then under Agenda Item 10, appearance in public forums, this is a time when we invite public comments. The standard rule of procedure is that we try to limit the comments of any one speaker to three minutes, try to encourage speakers not to duplicate each other and the past procedure has been, I can't say there haven't been exceptions, but generally this is for the information of the council and in this case since it's televised to the community members on the comments that you have to offer and we will probably refer the matter for staff consideration and then actually council consideration at a later date unless the council determines otherwise. So those are kind of the ground rules and I just ask whoever the spokespeople are, I see a familiar face out there. And but for the record, if, and I don't know if you've all decided upon an order to make presentations, but.
They're there.
It's in there, okay. Steve, Beyonich is president on behalf of the American Legion Post and if you could just for the record identify yourself and we invite you to share your comments with us.
Naturally, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve Beyonich, American Legion Post 241 here in Aurora, thanks for moving us up to, I appreciate that, so, and welcome councillors Hanson and McClosick, so. We're here tonight, as everybody knows, to request the council to consider abolishing the 10% charitable gambling tax. Rewind both ten years ago, coming this summer, the Aurora Council imposed this tax on the net receipts of charitable gambling conducted in the city of Aurora. At the time, it was an admirable thing to do as the Virginia Health Club and Climate Incorporated were operating in the city and with that, all of that money was leaving Aurora and not being, not being spent back in town. They put on the 10% tax, two years later, Caring for Kids was formed and to combat that, so with Caring for the Kids Community starting, all of our sites in Aurora are now being operated by Aurora Charities. And years later, we can see there's a splash pad, there's fire department improvements, you know, the Legion ourselves have donated seventy-five hundred dollars, this is just since 2020, seventy-five hundred dollars to the Tri-City Ambulance Fund, five thousand to the Aurora Fire Department, five thousand to Palo Fire Department, five thousand to the Embarrassed Fire Department, so, you know, not only do we take care of our community here, we also take care of our neighboring communities that, you know, enclose our membership to the Legion. Caring for Kids however, has spent almost all of their money right in Aurora and they don't even operate, and I can't speak for them, but they don't even operate all of their sites in Aurora. We have now, just our American Legion alone, last fiscal year, paid seventy-eight thousand dollars in taxes to the Department of Revenue in Minnesota. On top of that, we've paid real estate taxes, we've paid sales tax and everything we buy through the, through our gambling products and a 10% on top to the city of Aurora. I think that about five years ago, we came and asked the council to reconsider and the council denied that request at the time and I don't believe anybody here was even part of it at the time. But with the amount of gambling that goes on in Aurora and all the money staying in Aurora, it would be admirable for, and it would be wonderful for our organizations to not have to pay the city of Aurora yet another 10% on top of all the work we've done, so. That is all I personally have, I'd be happy to answer any questions and even, even beyond today, Administrator Hekla has my contact information if anybody, I'm usually pretty easy to get a hold of. Butch Sagler, who's also, he had called me this afternoon and he is ill and didn't want to take the chance of getting anybody else ill, so he said he's, he had to sit home, so I believe he's probably watching live, but yeah, so. Mr. Mayor, that's, that is all I have, that's, that's my case, I mean, if anybody wants any more detailed figures, I would be absolutely happy to provide that.
We have already, if you could share the, the figures that were part of your remarks, I think that would be good to have in the city records. And I don't want to, I realize I don't want to be the one to abuse the time, but just curious, when you listed out all those taxes, say for this past year or something, what percentage actually went to remain, let's put it, to give out to various worthy causes?
So our last fiscal year, from our annual report, so our, after, after two point one million dollars wagered, that is the gross, gross sales, you know, our, our net receipts after we paid out prizes was two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. From that, our allowable expenses were a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and our net profit was then a hundred and fifty-three thousand. After, after everything is said and done, we have, the Legion has a five-star rating with the state of Minnesota and we are at 59% of our profits donated to charitable cause, which is very, very high, you know, statewide, so I'm, I'm actually pretty proud of that number comparatively, and I believe Caring for Kids is, I think you guys are 59 as well. So to have two five-star organizations right in town, when there's plenty of organizations throughout the state of Minnesota that are teetering on two to three star on probation, I, I, I take a lot of pride in that number that our post and our veteran group has given that much back to our, our community. Scholarships at Musabe East, East Range Conservation Club, we've, you know, we've got a pretty lengthy sheet, and I mean, obviously, we do, some of our money does leave Aurora, I'll be honest with you, but we're part of a statewide and a nationwide organization and there's a lot of Minnesota programs for veterans that are funded through the Department of Minnesota, American Legion, and we do donate to help some of that. I mean, a lot of that is, you know, meeting comes up and they get two hundred and fifty and Musabe East Schools gets a thousand, so we, we do definitely prioritize our local, our local organizations here.
Thank you. Unless there are other questions from the councillors, I have a former councillor, Honkla, I believe you're the next one.
Do I get to ask questions as well, or should we move to Jackie first?
Well.
Go ahead, I'll go last.
Respect your delegation within the organization.
I'll stick to the list.
I'm sorry, so Butch Sagler obviously will not be here, I'm sorry, I guess, former councillor Honkla is the last of the speakers, so Jackie, you can identify yourself on the record and then make your points.
Jackie Chair, I'm the president of Caring for the Kids Community. I'd just like to add a couple of comments to Steve's. Caring for the Kids Community has been established since 2016, we've completed numerous product, projects alongside the city of Aurora, just to mention a few was two parks, a frisbee golf course, the splash pad picnic shelter, holiday heritage festival, lighting contest, Monster Bash, we've done scholarships, the batting cage that's still yet to come, and a whole bunch of smaller things, too many to mention. Hopefully, our next project will be a skate slash pump park, we worked very hard to complete all these projects and we've literally worked on Caring for the Kids Community every single day, seven days a week and my point is, we have completed so many wonderful things because we put in the hard work to do so. All the organizations that received money, yes, they're worthy causes, but Caring for the Kids Community is living proof that organizations can raise their money by themselves. A hundred percent of the money that we raise in Aurora stays in Aurora and we do this by choice, not by regulation. Year to date, in the year 2023, we have mandated, we have been mandated to pay the 10% fund of nineteen thousand two hundred and fifty-three dollars and this is not including the month of December yet. This is a close to whopping twenty thousand dollars, which is a lot of money for a small charity. The Legion and Caring for the Kids has single-handedly raised every dollar in the 10% fund account. When organizations receive those funds, the city of Aurora is the one who gets credit for it. Not that that's the most important thing, but I'm betting not one of them knows where the money truly comes from, because if they did, I'm guessing we'd get at least one thank you. I can only speak on behalf of Caring for the Kids Community, but our committee, I know our committee would love to give back to worthy causes that make a difference in our community, the proof is that we've done it many times in the past and at least they know where the money actually comes from. In closing, I'd like to ask the city council to abolish the 10% regulation since all our funds stay in Aurora anyways and this is by choice. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions, Jackie? No?
I had some.
No. Okay. Now, former councillor Honkla, I'm sorry I jumped ahead there, Jackie, I, it's out of hand, I suppose. Would you like to address the council?
Yes, thank you. Delisha Honkla, long-term resident and I am part of many different organizations in our community, I serve as a volunteer as well as serve on the nonprofit Caring for Kids. Both of these individuals spoke very well and said that they give and they give to good causes, all good causes, even if it doesn't say directly in our community, they're all good causes, so it doesn't matter, in my mind, the percentage, what these people are doing are amazing, to give back to our community and our surrounding community and our veterans as well as you do, so thank you both, because I know the thank yous have not trickled down this direction very often, so thank you for that. Just to revisit what they said, I mean, I think impact is important, if, if you listen, they both said these organizations gave approximately twenty thousand dollars each to the city of Aurora, is that correct? So a total of nineteen thousand, so approximately forty thousand dollars went to the 10% society into this town. These are nonprofits that shouldn't be taxed to begin with, right? They shouldn't be taxed. One more time, they already gave seventy-eight, approximately seventy-eight thousand, over seventy thousand to other taxes, so you got over a hundred and forty thousand in taxes already and then on top of it, you're asking for forty thousand more for these very generous charitable organizations already, so that's a lot to ask of these people that give of their time freely and not paid. Just looking to surrounding communities, BiWABIC currently charges their charitable gambling organizations 10%, and the reason why is because not all that money stays in the community. One of those establishments has gambling that goes outside of the community, so hence they have to keep their 10%. The city of Hoyt Lakes, on the other hand, does not have a 10% tax, you do not need to tax your charitable gambling or your charitable organizations, you don't need to, they don't do it, so why does the city of Aurora continue to do it? You know, they do valuable work, the, the organizations, committees and such as Celebrate Aurora can come to these organizations and they have freely given in the past and they'll continue to support these things, because we know it's important that we bring business into our communities through these events and organizations, they have very generously supported them in the past. So in conclusion, I think it, well, to put into a scenario, you have business in town, you want to encourage business in town, so why would you penalize a business such as, let's just, Richard, yours is outside of town in Tonaway, but just let's say that your business was taxed 10%, you had to give 10% of your profits to this city on top of everything you've already paid, but now you have a business that makes fifty thousand a year and you'd have to pay 10% of your profits to the city, that's what you're asking these organizations to do, pay one more unreasonable tax and that's all I have, unless you have, anyone has questions of course.
Thank you, councillor Hess, you said, with all the speakers.
I got a couple of comments. When you post information on Facebook, you should make sure that you have the correct facts. You posted that you pay a 10% tax on net receipt, you do not, the truth is, you paid 10% on net profit, which makes a major difference. For the year, fiscal year 2022, ten thousand on net receipts, you'd have paid twenty-five thousand, instead you paid two thousand nine hundred and ninety-one dollars in 2022.
I probably typed, yeah, it should have said net profit, that's what the ordinance said, read that, net profit.
That says net profit, not, you're saying, when you put this out, everybody thinks it's off there, because you got the wrong information putting out to the public.
The figures didn't change, it was the wrong term, you're correct, I, I, I just, right now, I remember that, yeah, I probably did type net receipt, but it does say net profit in the ordinance.
And also organizations conducting lawful gambling should file with the city clerk one copy of all records and reports required to be filed with the board. That records and reports shall be filed on or before the day they are required to be filed with the state and some of yous are two months behind, am I correct?
I think we're, I, I think I should be up to date.
Yeah, the last one you just came in, we didn't recede it in 2023 because we got it last week.
That took him up to the third quarter of '22.
Yeah, not down to fourth quarter yet.
But you're supposed to file that every month, not quarterly.
Says quarterly in the ordinance.
Huh?
The ordinance says quarterly.
No, don't.
So when we have a negative month, do you guys give us the money back if we have to file every month?
Yeah, we have, hey, there's the ordinance right there.
No, I'm saying, but if it's negative, do we get money back? Because if you file it quarter, quarterly, the months offset each other, that there's a positive and a negative.
Yeah.
I mean, if you guys are going to write us a check every month where we're negative, that would be okay.
That'd be fine with that.
Well, yeah, again, this is for informational purposes.
Item G in the ordinance.
Item G. I would hope that this overall discussion leads to some research and compilation book from your presenters and city administration.
Aside from the errors, these weren't malicious errors, these are, and of course we don't have.
But it's errors that go out to the public that makes us look like we're after your gross receipts.
That's not what we're here presenting though, we're presenting, this is the amount of money that we paid for taxes to the city.
This is what went out to the public.
I understand that, Richard, but I'm, my information that I'm giving today.
And we never hear the following be back when there's a mistake.
Oh, I just said, I'm sorry for missed, I missed, I, I literally typed the wrong word in, because you're, you're, I'm just so used to using the word receipt in, in all of the correspondence, because it's combined receipts taxes, I use the word receipt, but your, your ordinance does state net profit, so, and it's, I, I completely typed out the wrong word and I will tell you right now, you and I as gambling managers will catch that, but John Q. Public doesn't, that doesn't, the net receipts to me, as a, as a public member, is the same as a net profit. People don't, I didn't, I didn't get into the details in the ordinance and, and that's, I didn't put specifics in that as well, so it doesn't change the intent of that letter. I, I apologize for the missed type.
Change it to the amount of money.
It absolutely does, no.
One thing that I'd like to bring up just for the councillors and because this is being recorded on the public, is that the city hasn't formally responded, I did send you guys an email and you guys are aware of where our money goes, but just for the general public, we do have a gambling policy and it's much alike to what, what they can spend their gambling profits on, we can only spend it on the same, so some of those things are like 501(c)(3)'s, 501(c)(4)'s, nonprofit organizations, schools, youth, activities for youth, humanitarianism, volunteerism, things of that nature, what else do we, what else do we have on there? Programs for education prevention or treatment of problem gambling, scholarship funds, receipt, relieving poverty, homelessness, disability, just, there's, there's a long list of things.
I was going to say, I'm confident that the city administrator's office can make copies of any of this available, also together with any information that comes in from the speakers or the groups presenting here, so that the community can have just a more informed discussion on it and be able to proceed forward and councillors, if there are no more questions?
I have a question. Steve, thanks for telling us about the different groups that you participate, you know, you donate to, could both the organizations talk about how you prioritize, you know, where the money goes, you know, because like you said, Embarrassed, Palo, Aurora, that's great and I'm not, I'm not negative on any of it, I'm just curious, what criteria do you all use to prioritize what gets funded and what doesn't?
So, Caring for the Kids Community, we try to get children active in the community, so basically physically active, or like we did the holiday heritage festival, you know, so festival organizations trying to get families out, active in the community, basically away from electronics, that is our main goal.
So it's primarily children though, right? I mean, is it, is it aged specific?
It's children and family.
Okay. Yeah. We generally, veterans and community, it, it all depends on, it's, it basically depends on what month we get a request from and, because everything that comes from requests comes in writing to our organization, it then goes to our, our general membership meeting once a month and we, we always, we do everything, we keep everything local, if we've got an organization that's requesting, such as a Special Olympics, that has a statewide organization that sends us a letter, but we also have our local chapter that sends us a letter, we give nothing to the state and a thousand to the local, was our last one. We, we do have a scholarship program through Musabe East that with the increase of revenue from ETABs, we've been making more money, so we increased that from a five hundred dollar a year scholarship to, I believe we're at fifty-seven fifty a year in scholarships now to Musabe East, so we try to keep that money right here in town and, and like I said earlier, like if you're, the Department of Minnesota, American Legion sends out, they send out a new request every week for some fund, this Fund 82, Fund 87, it's, you know, Commander's Projects and everything else, we generally try to support what is in our town for veterans and, you know, it pays for our color guard that does all of our funerals, Memorial Day, Veterans Day at the school, but our, our priority is always veterans and, and local, local youth.
And they spoke earlier, just to expand on this, about a five-star rating and how they got this, well, they have a yearly, a year amount, they, they, well, they raise an amount and they have to spend it within a certain timeline to maintain that five-star rating, so, I mean, we may prioritize something above this, but because we have to spend down that money by a specific point, an organization comes in and asks for it, we need to spend down two thousand dollars by the end of October, they may get two thousand or the next person that asks for something similar within the community would then get only a thousand, because you have to maintain a hundred percent give, but it has to be in a timely fashion throughout the year.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
The, the gambling receipts that the city of Aurora gets, do you, do you generally spend that money in Aurora?
That gets back to the point the city administrator was making, there, there are materials available, the ability, you know, where the past monies have gone and then also the policy that he was referring to.
Well, I understand that, but I mean specifically, do you, do you basically spend all of that money in Aurora?
Yes, so since 2021, with these gambling funds, the city has spent seven thousand, seventeen thousand five hundred to Celebrate Aurora, five thousand dollars to the batting cage to be used by youth at Pine Grove Park Field, four thousand dollars to the Aurora Fire Department for hoses, two thousand five hundred dollars for the Aurora Volunteer Recognition Committee Dinner, two thousand dollars to the Aurora Rangers Snowmobile Club, one thousand dollars to the Special Olympics, eight hundred dollars to the Miss Aurora Scholarship, three hundred eighty-four dollars to Youth Cupcake Class, hundred and forty dollars to the Musabe Swim Boosters, six thousand dollars in 2019 Pine Grove Park, Park Lighting, overhead lighting for the ball field and five thousand six hundred dollars went to East End Park for new equipment, so that's where that money goes.
And again, the listing.
So I mean, it's not leaving Aurora.
No.
No, the listing of all those are available. Yeah. All right, appreciate all the comments and we tried to move you up on the agenda.
Thank you.
For purposes of enabling you to leave, which you're certainly invited and welcome to stay for the remainder of the agenda, so councillor Gody?
You know, I know you're calling it a tax and it may seem like a tax, it's, it's money that's still staying in Aurora, it's not money that's going to the state of Minnesota or the county, it just seems like it gives the city an opportunity to support these festivals which encourages businesses and people to come to town. If, if this was no longer the city's money, would, would your organizations still take the time to?
Absolutely, we have, we can, of course.
That's what we do.
And, and you know, the projects you, you've provided for the city, there is maintenance costs and stuff to those too, you know, so it, it, it just doesn't quite seem right to call it a tax, it's just our opportunity to use a piece of the pie for other things in Aurora.
It is considered a tax.
Yeah, but, but it.
Otherwise, it'd be a donation from us to you.
Right, but it.
But like you say, it's not, it's not like it's a tax that's going to the state and it's leaving Aurora.
Or the city's spending it on their cost.
Yeah.
Well, certainly appreciate the generosity that has been possible both through your organizations, the community, and then through the, the tax to the city, it, just looking back over the years, there've been.
You could consider less or lowering the 10%, as you said, you want to keep some of the money in town to make sure you're supporting these very important things, it wouldn't need to be 10%, so also consider that point forward.
It is time to go through all the requests too and, and some have learned to rely on it every year to keep Pumpkin Fest going and, you know, that kind of thing, so it wouldn't really, it wouldn't really give you more money, it would just make you in charge of it, I guess, but.
Right, well, I appreciate the fact that we had a good full airing of some of the issues, realizing that it will come back to the council for consideration on it, councillor Hess?
I got one more comment, just between the four organizations that got gaming between Hoyt Lakes and Aurora, there's four organizations, you got the Hoyt Lakes Chamber, the F W, Caring for Kids and Legion, all of us are five-star people.
Yep.
We have a good area here, everybody up here does a great job.
Just a little fact to throw out there, the receipts from the four organizations in 2022 was six and a half million dollars.
It's a great job from all of us, we should give.
That's receipts.
Great, pat on the back.
And to our gamblers. That's going to go down significantly, January 1st, 2025.
Yes.
And let's, let's, let's make some changes.
Let's, we can only hope.
All right, well, I think we have a full agenda to move on to, thanks again for your.
Thank you.
Council mayor, thank you very much.
Your time and the respectful welcoming.
Nice to see you.
We'll be back soon now.
Getting back to our prepared agenda then. If we could, I believe we'd go back to Agenda Item Number Four, which is the Consent Agenda. This is the portion of the agenda by which traditionally we approve a variety of council actions in one motion, subject to any individual councillors who want to take a matter out of that Consent Agenda, set of action items, does anybody want to have anything removed from the Consent Agenda for separate consideration?
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, move to approve the consent agenda. Second?
Supported.
Supported by Counselor Hanson. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving down to reports from staff members, we kind of had those right at our agenda setting meeting.
Yep.
Any additional ones that you can think of that we need?
Or not? Nope.
No, all right. So then, moving on to John, item 14, these are reports from councilors. And traditionally, we've gone with, by seniority. I think it might, might be inappropriate to ask Counselor Hanson and McLaughic to comment on their official city actions and everything else. But, let's see, I think Counsel, Counselor McLaughic, you are thus far have both been elected, but with the least number of votes, and this is your first seniority on the council. So do you have any comments you'd like to address to the council?
Well, I'd just like to thank Luke for all the time he spent with myself. And I won't speak for Bob, but to get us somewhat up to speed, it was very valuable, so appreciate that.
Thank you. Counselor Hanson?
I agree with, with what John just said, is Luke has been very helpful. And I'm, I'm looking forward to this. It's, there's a lot of interesting and exciting things about to happen in the city. And I'm excited to be a part of it.
Well, we're obviously glad to have both of you on board here. And it's nice to come in with those reflections or attitudes toward this opportunity of service. So with that moving on, Counselor Godey?
Well, welcome to the two new councilors. I'm looking forward to working with the two of you. I'm gonna move on to the East Range Public Safety Board. We, since our last council meeting, we went through the budget there. And there's a, there's a little, little bit of concern about the, what the budget is and, and what it costs to run the police department. But Tim Suler will do his best to, to cut back on wherever he can. We also had a meeting to finish the chief's contract. Wanted to get that all signed and, and worked out because this is the year he's going to retire. And they're making good progress on replacing the two squad cars that were lost in the accident. It takes a lot of time and, but they're trying to cut the time shorter. Now to the H R A, Michelle Ami has decided to end her time with the H R A, but we have a new member, Tim Salo. And that's about all for the H R A. But planning and zoning, we had no permits this month. The only thing, we had a couple of people's terms that ended, but we had no quorum, so we took no action on that. The fire department, they gave a nice dinner for all the retirees. And it's really nice to see some of the people I spent my time on the fire department. And you get to hear some old stories. And I think everyone appreciates it that has retired and gets called back to spend some time. This month, they did training on the radios and those radios now are so complicated. I'll tell you that fire department, we're very lucky. We have some of the best training officers I could think of. They've repaired the roof and the water damage in the, in the fire department. And I'm gonna be keeping an eye on it to make sure if there's a problem, we let the people know. Well, it's fairly fresh and, and may need additional attention. And then the Rams Committee, I was just elected to the board on the Rams. And my first meeting will be this month and keep track, news to come in the next meeting. That's all I have.
I think that Rams experience is going to be really valuable to, a tangential sort of
I've attended a few of their meetings as the alternate, but it is interesting.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Hess?
I don't have too much. I'm one of welcome new councilors. Next couple of years is gonna be lots of fun with all the projects we have going on, which makes it interesting. Other than that, that's about it.
This is more. All right, well, I'm not known to provide brevity on that. There are a few matters that I think ought to share with you. First of all, regarding the Water Board, I think it's important to just give a brief overview on where the project stands. As the city administrator alluded to, at one point, the bids came in. They were like $2 million off of our estimate. And then with added costs, it amounted up to a $33 million project, for which I think we have 20, 26 million committed. Is that right?
With, with a $5 million loan.
With the $5 million loan that the, that this council and city, as well as the town of White, have committed to provide. And we'll be dealing with some more financing issues related to that. But to close that gap, we've started a process of meeting with various stakeholders. The first one being the Public Facilities Authority Director. We had a meeting with Jeff Freeman and his staff, his deputies that were there, and outlined what our options were for both borrowing money and potentially opening up additional grant funds through the Modern Infrastructure Fund, which is where we're anticipating to get a $5 million grant and trying to see if there's a path forward to get like 3 million more. So in addition to that, we're meeting with Commissioner Rukavina tomorrow. And we met earlier this week with Representative Liz Legard, who's been very instrumental on the tax committee and in the bonding hearings, on being able to both know what the situation is and to steer some funds our way there. So the last avenue is one that the city administrator's been pursuing pretty vigorously. The access to Army Corps of Engineer funds, which have not yet been committed to the project, but which, based on his prior experiences, seem to be a viable potential additional significant funding source. And plans were made as to how to mobilize congressional muscle essentially to help advance our application. And I think some of the matters with which we're gonna be dealing will deal with that funding. But I think all those are exciting. The spirit on the board is that this project is going to go. And it's been a long time in the offing. And the overall sentiment is to try to minimize the impact on rates and on the local communities of the town of White and Aurora on funding that gap, but feeling that delay is not gonna be any better because the prices will go up even more. So that, that's kind of where that stands. Let's see, we've initiated a newspaper series, I don't think they mentioned that, but for the audience there in the East Range Times, they're trying to explain the factors that influenced the council's decision to increase the water rates by $20 per month. We felt that it deserves some explanation. And Luke and I have been working on trying to do a series of three installments on that. The Chamber attended the annual dinner on that. And just opportunity to give real kudos to both Lance and Amanda Johnson, who have served that organization and leadership for so many years. They got us, the whole organization through the COVID period of time, and that was no small achievement. And it, it looks like it's a viable organization going forward and a valuable one that'll be, have a voice in the projects we've talked about. Counselor Hess will be on, on their board, as well as Deputy Clerk Lindsey Luke. And I think there was generally a pretty optimistic tone that came out of the annual meeting on that. Last, well, first, the Rams, to pick up on the emergency services. At the Rams dinner, there was a lot of discussion about the efforts that are being made to promote legislation in the 2024 Minnesota Legislative Session to seek some remedy that's a common problem across the greater Minnesota of how to be able to continue to provide those critical services in an environment where at least the Medicare reimbursements are too low and some of the other collections aren't adequate to sustain operations. So I imagine we'll be called upon as a council to do supporting resolutions, to perhaps even testify and bring Marshall some testimony down at the legislature. But everybody's aware of this desperate problem. And I think Senator House, Lou, in particular, is authoring a piece of legislation that I think Rams and some of the other organizations are trying to support. And just the last, thanks to everyone that made the Holiday Heritage Event a fun time. We didn't have to contend with snow, but I think a number of people enjoyed the experience and getting out there. And I think it benefited the businesses. And just thanks to all the volunteers and the organizations that put that together. So that's the mayor's report, longer than, as usual, but there are a lot of things happening, as we've noted, in our city, so.
That's why I kept mine short.
Well, at least we, we know each other. All right, so moving on to the agenda, 16 on business. We have no matters listed online. City Administrator, no? All right, moving on then to new business, 17.1. We have a proposed resolution 2024-03. That's dealing with enterprise rates. City Administrator, do you want to give any explanation on that?
Yep, so the last meeting, you guys voted on approving the $20 rate increase. You specifically noted where you wanted to see those funds go to. So now that we know where they are, we have to do a resolution that spells out what the rates would look like for the 2024 calendar year. So you'll see in the resolution, the rate schedule and the funds designated to where they were told to go.
All right, is there a motion to adopt the proposed resolution?
I'll make a motion, adopt resolution 2024-3.
Been moved by Counselor Hess, support?
Support.
Supported by Counselor Hanson. Further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that matter is approved. Moving on to 17.2, we have a proposed resolution 2024-04 that is related to the water project and would be authorizing the city administrator on behalf of the city to apply for a loan through the Public Facilities Authorities Loan Programs. And fortunately, our city administrator has a considerable background in dealing with the PFA. So if you want to add any additional words there as to how this will be used and the significance of it?
Yeah, so currently right now, in order for us to start the project, we have to show that the project is fully funded. And because after bidding it not once but twice, we have a gap, a $7 million gap. The only way to get this project started and to stop the inflation is to add the loan from 5 million to 12 million. So, so while this loan looks like a 12 million dollar loan on its face, and it's important that you realize that it is that, we have two years to go after additional funds, including some value engineering, which we can't legally do right now until we enter into a contract with, with the contractors. So there's, you know, $1 to $2 million in cuts that we can use. There's Army Corps of Engineer that we're going after for $4 million. There's the state bonding monies that we're going after for $4 million. There's $1 million in contingencies in there. I can go down a list, but there's nine or 10 different ways that we can, we can raise money to, to bring that 12 million down to that 5 million. So that's essentially what you're doing, is you're just, the Water Board needs to get resolutions from the township and from the council in Aurora saying that we will fund a $12 million loan currently, but knowing that we're gonna shake that down and get it down as close to that 5 million as possible. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to.
Okay, we're also in the discussions, assuming that the Public Facilities Authority agrees to provide the $12 million loan. First of all, that's an incredibly low rate compared to the markets and would be for an extended period of time. But the commitment also from the Public Facility Authority Director was that as we are getting additional fundings from some of the sources that the city administrator is referring to, those would be acceptable to be sort of advanced payments to actually trigger a renegotiation of the loan for a lower principal amount. And then there's also was, I at least picked up on a sympathy to not draw down on the principal of that loan until we'd drawn down upon some of the many other funding sources. And when that starts, not to require us to pay the principal of the loan, but simply to pay interest payments commensurate with the amounts of the loan that have been advanced. So when the city administrator is referring to a two-year period, a lot of this is weighted at the end of that two-year period. And in the interim, we have all these alternative funding sources to hopefully come in and generate $7 million of money to reduce then the city's and the town's commitment to the $5 million debt load that we, we as a council and the town, as a town board, had committed to earlier, which we feel and the public facility authorities feel is most manageable for our relatively low net income per household level.
The other thing to remember is we will always have a $5 million loan. So the, the PFA said that that is Aurora's responsible affordability level. So even if we were to get 4 million from Army Corps and another four from the state bonding bill, and now we've got more than we have, they'll just take some of the WIF grant away. So we're always gonna end up with that $5 million loan, so.
And so do we start paying on that, say we take 12 million, do we start paying on it after the construction or right away?
Later in the, later in the construction, as funds are actually drawn down from that. And again, the payments that would be required would be probably interest payments until the system actually gets operational. And the, the other aspect of all this would be then, to the extents necessary to service, whenever obligations do come up, we'd have to ramp up our rates, hopefully not any higher than the one needed to handle a $5 million loan. But in any event, to entitle us to get the loan, we have to make them the assure, or provide them the assurances that we, as and when necessary, will in fact pay our obligations under that, under that loan. So both time is working in our favor, a cooperative lender is working in our favor. And as the city administrator noted, there are a number of potential funding sources that should hopefully collectively reduce any loan obligation down to that $5 million amount.
The ITRRB money is flexible, you could frontload that if we'd like to. The EPA fund, we've got $6.5 million in EPA funds that we can do. The other thing is when you, when Mr. Mayor's referring to the, the PFA, the Public Finance Authority, they're in charge of the Minnesota funds, so that'd be the state bonding bill. They're in charge of the loan, which would be the 5 to 12 million dollar loan. And they're also in charge of the bonding bill, bonding bill, the WIF grant and the loan. So when we would put in a request to PFA, say if it was for $100, they would take a third, third, and a third. So they'd take it out of each pot. So at that point, once we start getting into there, they'll take a third. But as Mayor suggested, or stated, the interest is only on what we're drawing. So we can frontload as much as we'd like to, and then it's a third, third, and a third, and then we'll only pay the interest on that. So we're already actively now going after other funds. I just applied to the Army Corps today. We're gonna be meeting with the ITRRB again. And we, we already are, and the next, the next resolution is switching the bonding priorities. We went from First Avenue We went from First Avenue to the water plant, Aragon Water Plant to First Avenue. So we're going across the board for a lot of different things here.
So with that background, I guess I've kind of lost track. I know we called the agenda item for 2024-04. I don't believe there's been a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution 2024-4.
Is that a support?
I'll support it.
Okay, Counselor Godey's supporting it. Counselor Hess making the motion. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion's adopted. Moving on to Agenda Item Seventeen Point Two, there's a proposed resolution 2024-04, which follows up on this same discussion as the city administrator.
That's what we just did.
We just did.
Oh, I'm sorry, 05, okay. Right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So 05 is a reprioritization of our various bond requests. City Administrator, do you want to just maybe comment on that in particular?
Yep, so in May, the bonding requests were required to be submitted. At that time, we had an engineer's estimate that showed we were funded, and we didn't need to go after any more funds from the bonding committee for that. So we submitted for First Avenue as our number one priority and our only priority. A few months later, we actually bid the project, and we found out that we were well over and we were not funded. So again, after that, at that point, we submitted a second one while the window was still open. We listed it as number two because we already had one in there, knowing that we'd have to come back and do this later. So what you're doing now is switching our bonding request priority from First Avenue to the water treatment plant. And we have a $4 million request into the state for the water plant as well.
All right, is there a motion then to approve the proposed resolution 2024-05?
I'll make the motion to approve 2024-5.
Moved by Counselor McClosage.
Seconded.
Seconded by Counselor Hess. Further discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Let's see, the seventeen point four, agenda item is the Costum Group Consultants Agreement. There's no resolution associated with that, but we do have to consider renewal or extension of that contract which we have had. I just want to comment, as we've noted in a number of the newspaper articles, the amount of state funding assistance which Aurora has receiveds and is aligned to receive is just mind-boggling. So and from personal experience, it's good to have legislators that are considering these matters. But the legislators have whispering in there all the time, the lobbyists. And my personal experience with our consulting firm is that they are extraordinarily competent at what they propose to do for us. So I don't know, City Administrator, do you want to give any other background on the?
Well, there is a 30-day-old clause on this.
It's $1,250 a month, so if anybody wanted to get out of it, you do have that option in there. I will say that I do use Jeff Anderson, who's our contact out of this group. He was at the meeting with Mr. Lizlegard the other day, and he's very, very handy. He's very, very helpful. For the Army Corps of Engineers, we need letters of support, so I can just send Jeff, "Hey Jeff, can you get letters of support from Staber and Klobuchar? He's on it." So he'll take care of that and get that for us. I will be in DC for National Rural Water in February, and he's going to probably come out with us as well and meet with Senator Klobuchar to have her sponsor our $4 million Army Corps bill. So he actually was out to go to DC and represent us as well and work on that. So I do use him. I do feel like it's valuable. And as long as we're going to continue to keep using projects in the bonding bill and everywhere else, he's a great help, so.
Counselor Hess?
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with Costum's Group.
Costum's Group. Is there a support?
I'll support.
Supported by Counselor Hanson. Moved. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, so there's no call. Just trying to find my agenda listing. Here we go, okay. Moving on to Agenda Item Seventeen Point Five, Proposed Resolution 2024-06. This is to accept a donation to some cemetery improvements. City Administrator, do you want to provide some comments?
I'd actually refer to Richard on this one.
All right.
Cemetery Board is looking at putting a new sign that says, "You come into the cemetery." And the cost is roughly $6,000. So I told Lindsay, I said, "Right now, letter to the VFW, and I'll see if I can get some money for it." So this is a resolution that the VFW in Hoy Lake's give $1,500, start to purchase that sign, so.
Is this the corner sign, or this is the one actually to the cemetery itself?
Cemetery, when you come in the main road from the west.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
The one that's gone, now it fell down.
Yeah. Just emphasizing the need for this. So.
She sent out some other letters, but this one I reacted on right away, so.
So I believe we.
I'd make a motion to accept their money.
Regarded your comments in that general vein.
And I signed the check.
Is there a support for Counselor Hess's motion?
Yep.
Supported by Counselor Hanson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Richard. Thank you.
Yes, thanks for all the work on that. So seventeen point six, Proposed Resolution 2024-07, calling for an EDA public hearing. This is again related to the prior discussions we had on forming an EDA. Not that today, but we had before when we were dealing and getting introduced to the new West Industrial Park. But City Administrator, do you want to explain the significance of this?
Again, EDA stands for Economic Development Authority. We're working on some bylaws right now. This would be almost like a sister to the HRA, where HRA is working in opposing redevelopment authority. This is the Economic Development Authority. So this is what we'll be working with, the ITRB, on the $6 million loan portion of the West Industrial Park. The idea is that counselors and mayor would be the five-member seated group. You'd have to vote on a president and a vice president of that. My recommendation in the bylaws would be to have myself as the secretary as an outside non-voting member. And then our accounting clerk, Kim Behrens, would be the treasurer, so she can take care of all the funds and dispersments as a non-voting member as well. And we would talk about this. Well, this is just approving the resolution, setting the hearing on February 6th. And we'll put the required paperwork into the papers and get it lined up.
It was a good comparison document to show the various authority and powers of both the EDA and the HRAs by statute, what each can do. So I think it'll prove to be an interesting experience for us all to consider that. But this gets the ball rolling and gets a public hearing set. So is there a motion to approve the proposed resolution?
I move approve.
Moved by Counselor Hanson.
All supported.
Supported by Counselor Godey. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion is adopted. And that concludes the listed items on the new business portion of our agenda. Is there, City Administrator, any other matters? All right, well, I think we've gotten through three meetings today. It's a good.